So I'd like to call this meeting to order. Document the time at 6:40 and if you would join please for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to this republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll start with Julian had a conflict this evening and will not be with us and Mohammed will be here shortly, so we're gonna start and he'll join us in a few minutes. And so Tori if you would with mindfulness.
Alright, so we begin our school board meetings with a moment of mindfulness to sort of remind ourselves why we're here and how we came together. So everybody just find a comfortable seat and take a deep breath, feel your lungs fill up as we focus and then breathing out relaxation, breathing in for focus and out for relaxation. Just found a regular breathing pattern. This is the time we take to arrive from where we've come from, to remember us coming together to govern with our students at the center and our community at the center of what we're doing. And on your next exhale, bring yourself back.
Alright, had the day off today, it's a much easier transition than it normally is. That's good. Alright, so we, agenda adjustments, we have, I'm just gonna add an addendum to the consent agenda here for an add to fill in the blank for the middle school math science teacher. We'll talk about that right after the consent agenda, got a sheet in front of you for that. We're also gonna change the executive session header from contracts to labor relations slash negotiations to try to be consistent with past practices and to set that as a future. Just kinda keeping our executive sessions clean and thoughtful whether we need them or not.
Excellent.
Alright, and anything else for agenda adjustments? Anything else, got captured? Alright, and our focus on learning section tonight, we've actually got two pieces, right?
We do.
To the whole discussion.
And I will hand it over to Leon in a moment, but no, go ahead and take your, take your spot. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Leon Wheeler, Kate Groden, the Winewski Middle High School principal and assistant principal, and the Winewski Middle High School leadership team who have worked diligently over the last couple of years and showed great leadership and foresight and work with their colleagues, tremendous collaboration in getting to this point, which is really exciting and which you're gonna hear about tonight. You are gonna hear about kind of two pieces, the bulk of it being about what's called the house model and how we would like to move forward with a structure that supports student centered learning. And then also there will be some highlights of how we have progressed as a, as a school with student centered learning practices in the past year or so.
And I'll reiterate what Sean said, two years ago, we started the process of reshaping our leadership structure in the middle high school and it was guided in some level by the root not to start process and we identified a team that's going to be useful with our students meeting 21st century expectations. The team that we gathered together included, and I will show you names, I think everybody knows these individuals, Brett Litterer, and as I call your name, you're gonna actually come up, this is so cool. Brett Litterer, the intent in identifying these particular individuals was these are individuals who are going to lead some team within our structure. So these first four are vertical teams or six 12 teams, Brent's was humanities, Nancy Keller leading the science group, Tom Pear leading the math vertical team, Ingo White, who's unable to be with us this evening, kinda had the catch-all other, which we called the arts, and Andrea Wieland being the teacher leader for the middle school teams. So the first of those, first year, two years ago, this was the team that we had, we added this past year Matt Webb with the iLab and Kate Groden, the assistant principal, also started last year. And rounding out our team was our new curriculum coordinator, ELL coordinator, but really specifically on this team for the ELL, for the curriculum coordinator was Kirsten Colgard and Kirsten also had a conflict, so she wasn't able to be here. But I'm gonna now turn it over to this team because it has been the collective work of this group that's been, that's led us forward as a school community and allowed us to take the steps that we've made with relative success in a short time and great promise long term.
Sure, I can do that. Is it on this one? Oh, it is, okay, great. So I'm gonna start by talking to you about one of the most clarifying moments that we've had this past summer as a leadership team. There's certainly a lot of different roles that we can take on in the school and a lot of things that we all would like to work on, but one of our refining moments this summer is when we looked around the table and we knew that the focus of our work this year needed to be around the GXs, the graduate expectations. And I'm gonna give you some examples of this thing that we have now called the GX Champ. I'm gonna read them to you, kind of have you look at what, what you notice about them and then I'll explain how we got there because it's kind of a different concept. So these are all pulled from the last month, we have the GX Champ of the day and it's kind of a thing in middle school to talk in hashtags, so I will attempt to do that for you, I don't know if that's cool in high school or not. Not, I'm thinking that it might not. Okay, Sarah, this is hashtag GX Champ, Taylor Langley, uses CTPS or critical thinking and problem solving, analysis, which is one of the dimensions of critical thinking and problem solving, to explore population growth, great model and tailor. And the Oscar goes to Devin Fisher, hashtag GX Champ for hashtag analysis, oh Romeo in the play, in the humanities play, effective oral and written communication, one of our GXs. Congrats Jared Burlingame and Hunter Robert, WMHS hashtag GX Champs for effective oral and written communication, excellent evidence plus analysis, hashtag unbothers. Khadija Siddique demonstrates CTPS skills, reflecting, evaluating and revising her theme paper, she's our hashtag GX Champ. Hashtag GX Champ, Edmund Doe uses hashtag analysis skills to decide complex guitar music and perform at a high level, excellent effort. Sean Silvestre is GX Champ for using his hashtag speech skills and running his own parent teacher conference. That one's cut off a little bit. Hashtag GX Champs, Ms. White, foundations of English showing amazing hashtag presentation skills with their moving poetry. And finally GX Champ, Santi Sabuti, mastering standard deviation and preparing to share at Expo Week, hashtag CTPS, hashtag analysis. So hopefully, looking at just those quick six examples that I pulled from this month's GX Champ, you saw a variety of students, grade 6 through 12, a variety of disciplines and content represented, we have individuals, partners and whole class groups recognized. And our uniting theme is our GXs and specifically focusing on the two GXs that we're working with this year, critical thinking, problem solving and effective oral and written communication. So what is all this, my question? We had the privilege of working some with Sarah Bartusi from, as a leadership team and she introduced us to the concept of keystone habits and this is our keystone habit for the GX Champ. What a keystone habit is, is a practice that if we all adopt, it can lead to culture change. So we had a retreat where we spent some time thinking, what could we do to get the GX skills on the forefront of people's teachers, students, community, on everyone's minds every day? And we came up with the idea of nominating, having teachers nominate students when they see them doing critical thinking or problem solving in the classroom or effective oral and written communication. And we went through a process of figuring out, you know, the logistics of what that looks like and we think that it's been fairly effective as becoming part of our school culture and then you'll see actually one of our students bringing the Champ belts that they actually wear, I really was hesitant about the actual physical belt, but they actually wear the belt, on her class trip to Boston. So we hope that it's built positive momentum in the school and really gets everybody thinking about the GXs every day.
Alright, so the transition we're gonna make here is we're gonna be sort of doing an introduction to what we're referring to as the house model, which is sort of the dramatic change we have sort of planned for 2016. I'm gonna begin by talking about our high school action plan that was created last year and then adopted by the leadership team, eventually used actually as I think one of the, the primary documents in the reapplication for the partnership change grant. We have basically four levers of change, four things we wanna change in the high school and middle school. And we wanna move to a proficiency based model that teaches GXs. And so what we mean by this is we are going to change the formula right now, time is the constant and learning is the variable. After four years, if you have credit to graduate, time is always the same whether you've learned enough or not. We wanna make a proficiency base, which means that learning is the constant and time is the variable. When you're ready to graduate, you graduate. This would be through a combination of graduate proficiencies, roughly academic proficiencies and then more importantly at the very top of the pyramid, the graduate expectations which we just brought us. We also decided we need, we need a more flexible schedule, the year-long schedule or the half year schedule just doesn't really work for kids. We, our kids come in and out more, we need more opportunities to probably change classes based interests, so we said we needed a, a schedule that can fit our students' needs best. We needed to have courses that were, and learning opportunities that were driven by teacher and student passions, alright? It shouldn't be just, we teach this class because we taught it last year, what do the kids wanna learn and then match that with teachers who are passionate about that learning and making it happen. And then the final thing is we need to invest in time and resources to help train teachers and give them time to collaborate to make this happen. All of the schools we visited in the, in the two years of the Nellie May Grant in researching how schools have changed, they all do this, they spend time, A, teaching and training their, their staff members, but also giving them time to talk and collaborate and, and, you know, really help with the shift.
So one thing we thought about while we're imagining like, what could the school look like, what could it be, was this idea of like on a large scale, what are the learning opportunities, how long do they take? And we landed on the idea of trimesters. And trimesters, because it's, it's enough time to keep things fresh and frequent, semesters they just, is a lot, length of time, there's a lot of, there's some burnout inside of there. So trimesters will keep it fresh, keep students moving constantly, having new opportunities to explore new ideas and the graduation expectations. Inside of the trimesters, it's also another part of it, was with semesters, there's only two opportunities throughout a year to really showcase the learning at the end of each semester. The trimester that kind of, it gives us another opportunity, so now we have three opportunities each year to showcase the learning students have done. Along with that is, after this showcasing has occurred, it'll give us time to, to reflect with the students, gather their feedback around what classes they might be interested in and give us time to develop those opportunities for them. The trimesters allow students to progress to the GXs at a more flexible rates, it's three times a year for this opportunity for students to either gateway from middle school into high school or to graduate from high school into college or the workforce. And it just, it just seemed like the right fit, the perfect amount of time, that like eight to 10 week span for a nice solid unit, going after just one proficiency and, and working on a complex assessment. So also in that, on the large scale, we're thinking, okay, so we've got trimesters going on, how do we maintain like the connection to students throughout all of this? And, and what this is really coming down onto is this, this house model with three different houses. Students stay within their house for the time that they're within high school, we're focusing on high school right now. So within each house, we're gonna have a blend of teachers. So we were thinking one teacher from each content area, an ELL teacher and a special educator linked up to the houses, one IA each inside of those houses as well. We've got roughly 211 students right now, so each house, where did it come up to like 60 just about, maybe a little bit more or something?
If you knew math, you might say seven.
If I knew, maybe seven. Never take them, some go to, some go to, some go to the tech schools and stuff. So students are in that house for the duration of their high school career and that's where they get their advising, that's where the, the PLPs occur, that's where they kinda map out what school's gonna be for them and how they're gonna do this. And it's really around teams of teachers supporting students. Right now with our TEA model, we've got one teacher and a group of students, we're looking for that team of teachers to support the students within the house and to follow them as they, as they move through.
So traditionally, the way we offer opportunities for education in schools is by having classes and everybody takes classes and that's the one way you do it. You sign up for your classes and you go there for a period. One of the things we experimented with the iLab this, over the last couple of years is looking at a different way of offering learning opportunities. And in fact, we are imagining expanding the different types of opportunities so that students can learn in different ways. One idea that we're actually gonna begin implementing next year under Tom's leadership is a math lab, so that students will be able to achieve the required experiences in math through the STAR math assessment. It's a way that students rather than being tracked into a single math level, will be able to work flexibly with teachers depending on the unit, depending on the content, to move among levels, to collaborate with different groups of students. It'll also let the math department teachers do a lot of collaboration together and making use of their math practices work and that will continue. The iLab, self-directed, learning based on the graduate expectations, the iLab is, provides for flexibility, provides students the chance to do individual activities, works in a lot of internships, is a way that one of the things we're experimenting with is how do we award credit for different experiences? In the future, we'd be looking at how do we award credit for the proficiencies through different experiences. Also, we wanna provide studio times. Studio times, if you could imagine, the easiest one to imagine is, is an art studio where the teacher has some time to work with students in different groups. One of the things that we find in the iLab is that we have students who wanna study graphic design, but our art teacher doesn't have any time in her schedule even though she worked in graphic design. So these would be times the teacher would have the ability to work with kids who have those needs or to collaborate with colleagues who are doing a project that might benefit from, from the arts. Or there might be students who actually sign up for that time to be in there, working towards their GXs on a, on an art related project without being in the iLab but being with a, a content specialist. And finally magnet classes. And magnet classes, we often think of like as closest to traditional classes, but the, the idea behind calling them magnets is that they would pull students from all three houses, so they would magnet. So you could be a teacher on house, house A and have students from houses B and C come on over to your, to your team. And the, the idea behind magnet classes though is that they are GX focused. So rather than taking, rather than taking a biology traditional class, in order to get a science credit, you would be taking, you might be taking a class that's emphasizing life sciences, but at the focus of it would be practicing for a GX assessment, one of the big assessments and also meeting proficiencies in certain areas. That's a way to include content so that we don't forget the importance of, of certain knowledge bases along the lines of the education quality standards, the new EQS, but in a different framework that the EQS really gives us the space to experiment with. There are other pieces of time that we think about in terms of the, the daily schedule, all houses would have about an hour, that would be an all house community time. Now, the middle school is doing some of this right now, in a sense, it's a combination of iLab ideas and also full team time. So Journey has GI Lab this year and Team Nexus has theme time. And this would actually bring that practice into the high school. It would allow us to do a bunch of different things. It would allow us to do advising, it would allow us to do team-wide, not team, that's the middle school word, but house-wide projects. It would allow us to advise kids closely and help them actually do some of the work on, on their projects. So it might in some ways take the place of a study hall, although that would not be the preponderance of the time, but it would also give this cohort of teachers time to work flexibly with their students. Teacher common time is very important, all the houses would have a block in the day when the teachers could work together. And that'll be crucial because the mission of each house is going to be to help those students achieve graduation through the grad expectations and the proficiency. So if that's the goal, the house, house faculty, which will include just about everybody on the faculty, that'll give them time to help move the students towards that. There'll be snack, as there is now, like our breakfast time, there'll be lunch and our plan also includes flex time for the faculty, so I don't need to go into the details on that, but it's just about how we use before and after school time so that teachers may be able to, to deploy their, their work differently. I'll give you an example, under the house model, the house would get common planning time during the day, but the math department might not get that common time and what they could decide is a half hour before or after school or they could just choose an hour. We have that time that right now JFK, 7:30 to 8 is kind of their daily time. We would take that time and grant it to teachers to use in different either committees or teams that otherwise didn't have time to meet. Okay, and so now we move into the, this goes with the last slide. We move into the, Tom developed this chart that shows, that kind of builds the schedule and, and you probably can't read the details from now, from there, but we did put all the teachers' names on the side because we, we thought about leaving it blank, but we realized we need to let people know that this is happening and here's what your job might look like within it, okay? Some of the names will be changed for next year, but this is the general idea. It shows the morning or afternoon flex time for teachers, it shows that there would be a, a block, a block early in the day followed by snack. The idea is then students would move into all house community time where they would only be with their own house and we wouldn't have cross-house activity, it would be a chance to really work together as a small community. And we have, each of the three houses would have sometime in the day a common work time and there's lunch.
So as we move through the rest of this presentation, you're gonna see this schedule get populated with the ideas we just spoke about.
So part of our idea here is, here is that for the most part, students are mixed ELL and native speakers, however, we recognize the need for a newcomer academy, certainly the research and, you know, our ELL teachers have been very clear, like there's a time when you come into the country and you're learning English that it's really important to have a sheltered education. And so most of their academic needs, most of their classes will be met during a specific ELL newcomer academy. Now, though most of their, their, their classes, their math, science, English, so on, all their GX classes will be in the ELL newcomer academy, they'll still be immediately put on one of the houses and be able to integrate the school as, as a member of the house, they'll stay on until, until they graduate, hopefully get them acclimated to the school, make some friends and just be a part of the school community. And so when you look at the next level, you see how, where the ELL newcomer academy would teach, or would have.
Brett just made a good point, the idea behind the houses is that they would continue for all four years of high school, so there would be a consistent team, but it would have a, a multi-age element.
Correct. Something we should have done at the beginning by the way, this is a, we're still gonna be soliciting more feedback and maybe make some tweaks and changes, this is a draft, it's a solid draft, we're happy with the draft, but it is a draft. And so some of the things you'll see on there, you saw the listed names on the side, those aren't the teams, those are placeholders for us just to get started.
And this high school model wasn't created in isolation from the middle school. High school is referring to their teams as houses and the middle school refers to their teams as teams. But what's wonderful about the development is that the house model was created with the middle school in mind so that there's assured opportunities for morning and afternoon arts rotations. Previous to this, we had one arts rotation time and this, middle school students' options for other kinds of education was limited. In fact, next year, we're gonna have in place two arts rotation periods for middle school students. So that's already a step towards this house model or some of the benefits from the house model. When we speak a little bit of gateway movement, the middle school is working on what we're calling gateway expectations. We have our graduate expectations of what you need to do to be able to graduate from high school. We will be working on a parallel construction of what we're calling gateway expectations, a set of expectations that middle schoolers would need to meet to move on to high school. And we conceivably could have middle school students meeting our middle school gateway expectations and be able to exit and move into high school level work, not necessarily meaning a physical movement upstairs, but at least cognitive movement towards their graduate expectations. And finally, I wanna mention trimesters. It wasn't one of the benefits that was listed earlier, but as a middle school teacher experiencing sort of the block scheduling that we have in the high school, we have green and white days and I have seen middle school students on green days and then I don't see them for another day and maybe I don't see them for three days, I found it as a disruption to the learning. So another benefit of moving to trimesters is that we have still good chunks of time to be working with kids at one particular time, at least an hour long, if not a little bit more classes, but we get to see them the next day and the next day and the next day, which really supports research around how we learn best in that we should really be learning something new and then rehearsing that about an hour later and then rehearsing that again about 24 hours later. And that wasn't readily accessible in terms of having a teacher help with that learning with a green day, white day model and trimester helps address those things, so.
The one piece I would add about the trimesters, I don't know if we were entirely clear, but our goal would be to provide multiple gateway and graduation opportunities for students. So there, there was some concern, what if middle school students, for example, don't finish all of their gate, graduate, gateway expectation assessments or all of their proficiencies at the end of what would be eighth grade? Well, they come back in the fall into the middle school and they have more time to do that, but they're not stuck there for what may feel like the rest of their lives. If they're done after the fall trimester, then they move into high school and they don't really start behind because we're personalizing so much of the individual plans for students. The same is true for, for high school students, of course, if you finish a little bit early and these would be roughly November, March and June, if you finish all of your proficiencies a little early, you could finish at one of those other points. If you don't finish, it doesn't feel like you have to come back and do your senior year all over again for another whole year, you can come back and if it just takes you the fall trimester, you do that. So when you're ready to graduate or gateway, that's when you do it. And our expectation is that we would invite all graduates to the end of the year ceremony even if they finish in November, which I think is a concern for a lot of students. This slide, I jumped in on Nancy there, but this slide is related, it shows where the middle school arts rotation are reflected in the high school faculty.
Alright, so we talked briefly earlier about the options that are always available. So iLabs would be linked to houses, iLabs would be run by a teacher, IA support in there as well, and you can consider this a place where students are working on their independent work, any projects that they have. Could also be a place where say a student was really interested in working on a project during one of their magnet classes, just didn't finish in time, they could take that into the iLab, continue working on it and meet proficiency through there. The iLab's kind of this place where you're exploring your learning, it's open to all students on every house. Likewise, we have the math lab. You've got a time during the day when you just don't have a magnet class signed up, you're not doing an internship, you're not out with the community, come on in, do math Come on in, do math lab, right? This is a time to work on those skills to get you ready to pass that STAR assessment, but also to make the connection between what you're learning in your classes and applying the math there as well. So, those are available at every moment throughout the day. On here, you'll see the I-Labs in red, the math lab is in purple. And they're always there for students.
So, meeting our students where they are, the ELL progression. One of the things that the ELL teachers have worked on is how to make sure that their students are in the right classes. And even within, say, an ELL three or four class, you might have students in really different places in terms of that learning. Sometimes there are students who are taking the class for a second time because they didn't quite reach proficiency previously. The idea is that we would create an ELL model where the teachers could collaborate together to offer different skills at the same time. So, if you look at this, the ELL is in the orange and we would have the newcomer academy meet at the same time as ELL two. So, if students, if the teachers found that the newcomers were ready to move into a less sheltered experience, they could do that within the same block of time. The same is true for ELL three, four, and five where those teachers could collaborate. The other thing that it could offer that they may pilot next year is offering times where each teacher could focus on what they're good at. So, if Mrs. White wants to offer a grammar class and Mr. Clark wants to offer a writing class and Ms. Savage wants to offer, say, a literature-based class, they could do that at the same time and they could be flexible with their grouping. Much as the math labs will allow the math teachers to collaborate and not be so fixed on the specific course, but rather on the objectives, this would also allow the ELL teachers to be similarly flexible and collaborating together.
So, Matt already touched on this actually pretty thoroughly, the magna classes. So, these are the classes that are cross-team designed to draw anyone in. We actually have a frame of reference for this in the high school right now. Right now, in science classes, for all the science classes and the junior, senior-level English classes, we ask the students, what would you like to learn? They say, we would like to learn these things. We have them vote on them. And then we build our classes around that next year. So, they kind of choose the content and then we put the skills in there, the transferable skills. Next year, for example, I will be teaching psychology and mental health and, or mental illness in literature and a writing seminar on food culture, which is going to take a lot of planning. And Rainbow's excited. No, I'm excited. So, the idea is then, like, we work with students to say, what would you guys want to learn? And how can we build a class around it? The class experience is still viable. Some kids really do like that. And we hope to offer everything from very individual classes to, or very individual settings like the I-Lab to these group classes. These can be cross-disciplinary. If Mr. Perrin and I have often talked, or well, at least I've talked about it and he's listened, of a math-literature class, because I think that'd be really cool to do, like, some sort of combination of them. This would allow for that. And it's really mostly a vehicle for student and teacher passion. So, the magna classes will exist at various times throughout the day. And they're all in green. And again, the key to this, kids from all the teams can take it. So, you're not on your house the whole day to go, man, I really want to take that Star Wars class. But you could take it, provided it, you know, you're not taking something else at that time, so.
Apparently, I jumped the gun on all the different types of classes, but that's okay. The, so says I. The studio experiences would be flexible project-based spaces. I mentioned the art studio, but we could do the same thing with health studios. We could do the same thing with wellness studios. We could have, for example, Ms. Messier in the weight room, open to different students who may have projects that involve weightlifting or body, physical conditioning. They could be students who are grouped around a theme or skill set. So, rather than being specifically tied to a curriculum, it could be a chance for students to practice some of the graduate proficiencies that they would need to graduate. And maybe come together in smaller groups where the teacher is available to help them. And students may enroll, but it might also, as I said before, be a place where students work on pieces of components from other classes or where they're more independently driven, but could benefit from having a closer contact with the teacher in that subject area. Those pop in in purple. Not to be confused with the Darple.
The pink. Okay, so, we've got this, we've got this whole new model. It's supporting students in how they learn, what they want to learn, and getting them towards the graduation expectations. But there's some duties that we need there to ensure success. One of those is continued leadership team. It's been, it's been really exciting to work on this team. And I think I speak for everybody when I say that. The things we're allowed to grapple with, it's just amazing. And in order for this to continue to work, we need that leadership team. We need that time especially. We all have that time during the day and it's invaluable to us. We use it often, always. On top of this, we're moving towards the graduation with the GXs. And it's a lot of work. And we're finding out that we really need somebody to coordinate all this work for us. The time we have in each individually is not enough, but with one person dedicated to this task, they can be the driving focus for this. So, we would need a GX coordinator for this, for this to continue to work. On top of that, we have other duties inside the school that exist right now and would continue to exist, being the tutor coordinator, virtual high school coordinator, and EST coordinator. With these structures around, we can support all students as they move towards graduation and gateway. And you'll find the duties in the, pop up in brown.
Obviously, we built in prep time to find the classes. That'll show up in a moment. More importantly, though, there's like ELL co-teaching opportunities that you're going to see. So, right now, we have these opportunities. We're going to expand them. Yeah, so, Mark McQuinn and Bill Clark co-teach a US history class. Dave McNally and Becky Savage co-teach a science class. I actually co-teach the senior seminar with Mr. Clark. So, we're supporting native speakers and non-native speakers in the same setting. The idea, I think, more people learning together is going to provide more.
And Andrea.
Some in the middle school as well.
Yes, Andrea co-teaches in this one, so. And that shows up.
Some of it's yellow and some of the yellow stuff is orange.
But it's filled in.
It's filled in.
It's filled in. You can see the full complexity of this schedule and all the opportunities to learn in different ways.
So, now we'd be delighted to take questions.
I would love a copy of that if possible.
The PowerPoint?
Yes, or even just.
We'll make sure Sean has it and.
Because we have a lot of the details, so just like the schedule. Because it is hard to see, so, just to get more of a visual of the blocks of time you're speaking about.
Yeah, so the one thing it'll be important to, just to keep in mind is that this, as Brent said, is a draft. It's not final.
Right.
And again, that'll go through Sean.
Rainbow?
When they have a house idea, would you guys, you know, maybe marry water?
We already bought the sorting hat.
Kelby has claimed Gryffindor, just so you know.
He's such a Ravenclaw though.
So, it's obvious you guys have put more than just this week's worth of time into this. And it's greatly appreciated, not only the getting to this point, but the willingness to do something different. Understanding that what we're doing right now isn't necessarily the best thing. And then, not that, but taking the next step and actually doing something with it, so. I just want to say we appreciate the thought, understanding that it is going to change and morph potentially, like any good things will. But I greatly appreciate your time and energy. Rainbow?
On a more serious note, so, is this change going to take place next year or in two years? Next year?
Fall of 2016.
Fall of 2016.
That's our goal.
That's our goal. And also, one of the things to remember is that the state requires us by 2020 to be able to graduate a class proficiency-based.
Okay, then when you're doing the whole house idea for the student house that can be organized, is that completely randomized or will that be, will there be something special?
As you know, Brent, Mr. Lett and I frequently disagree and so we settle it various ways.
Not here, please.
Brent had one idea.
So, the short answer to your question is we don't know how we're going to do this. We haven't decided. We'd love to listen to a lot of people's opinions on how the best way to do it, including students. I kind of thought, wouldn't it be cool if it was to a certain extent by interest? And then you could say, hey, I want to be in this house and there's some sort of process for being in it. You know, I think the idea of being admitted into a program actually adds some validity to the program. That's a thought. I'm not banging my fist on the table and saying we have to do this.
And my feeling was that Mr. Lett's idea was wrong. That's all.
Subject to change without notice as we move forward.
Yeah, but we don't know. It's probably going to be, we're going to try to make it as smooth as we can and it'll be messy.
So, it sounds like there will be student voice involved in how this sort of takes place since it will be a year from now, or at least a school year from now. And other faculty voice are just mining. Have you laid this out for faculty? And certainly, probably not students, but there will be a chance for them to sort of speak to what may, you know, what they think?
So, I would say there's been, and nowhere near enough student voice in the process. Virtually none, although students have served on committees along the way. Shaking heads, absolutely right. So, Rainbow, Ladanya, could we get some time with you guys to help work on how we can, like, roll this out for the students and then get feedback? We'd love to work with you guys.
Just email.
Email.
And Rosie, yeah.
You're just like, Joe, give back to them.
But you guys are the first students who've heard the full plan and so, you know. I don't know, you're the first students to hear the full plan, so that's probably.
I have a lot of interesting thoughts about this.
I really want to. Joe?
So, as a parent, I'm going to ask the question of how do you, you've already started with your science program, trying to implement this. Are you going to start rolling it out before you actually implement it? To get the current students, so when you change this over in 16, you've already got, you're going to have your freshmen now as juniors, your sophomores as seniors. So, like, how, are you thinking about how that's all going to play out so they're not just feeling like they're everywhere and, you know, and parents aren't frustrated over it? And I speak just because we've had some parent meetings about the changes going on and stuff. And I just want to be proactive about frustrations from the students and the parents going forward and, you know, mindful of that.
I think the root of this whole plan, which we didn't get into the history, right? But a couple of years back, the Partnership for Change did a lot of community learning conversations. And from those came some dialogues that folks participated in with different members of the community, particularly some of the new American communities. And from those dialogues, one of the things that the parents said was, we want our kids to graduate with skills. We don't want them to go to CCV and find out that because we're all beholden to this four-year business that we push the kids through and they aren't up for CCV work. At the same time, one of the models we've looked at, we have several students now who are seniors who have basically done this on their own. They've constructed their own programs. They're at the tech centers for part of the day. They're doing internships. They're on virtual high school. They take a class here or there. Sometimes they're in the I-Lab. So, we actually have students who, because we're a small school and we often can't offer the same range of classes as other schools, this plan would allow them to access more. So, our work ahead of us is to communicate that. That this is actually about creating more options and more certainty that kids emerge from the school with the skills that they need and would hopefully break folks out of the box that may, for some higher-achieving students, may feel like it's holding them back. Would actually allow this school to provide many opportunities that bigger schools might not even have considered.
And then, you know, in terms of, like, two questions that I know I've heard already. What do we do about the kids who've already earned credits and then we move to this proficiency-based system? Well, we're going to honor that. We're going to find a way to transfer those. Because if they've been working diligently and earning credits, we need to honor that. That's just right. We're going to have transfer students who come in from other schools. We'll have to find a way to honor that. Then the other big question, college. What will this look like for students going to college? And so, you know, colleges definitely have processes for homeschool students or students with non-traditional transcripts. The South Burlington Big Picture High School has a non-traditional transcript and their kids go to college. And we've been fortunate to have, Emmy has arranged some days where college representatives have come in. I selfishly asked the question, what do you do if it's a proficiency-based transcript? And they say, well, we have a process for that. And so, and then I think the most important thing is, Matt, Tashna, we're going to graduate kids when they're ready to go to college and ready to meet the workforce. And I think that's the most significant change is saying, you know what? We know you can go be successful as a reader, a writer, a mathematician, a scientist, and that you are, you know, a good communicator, a problem solver, persistent, and meet all our GXs. So, and then in terms of some of the transition stuff, we have to figure that out yet. Not all the details are there.
I would add to that. I mean, I think that is a really important piece that you bring up in terms of educating the community. Starting here, we're helping to educate the board and you advocate as ambassadors in the community to parents and other stakeholders. So, that has to continue in a really intentional way. There's a marketing aspect to this that we need to sell to the community because at the same time, not only we want parents to feel comfortable and kids, students to feel excited about it, but we need to engage the community who will support this in different ways. So, when we knock on the door and we say, we've moved to this new system and we have a kid who's really interested in becoming an electrician, are you willing to help support that? And then, part of that education is that this is a requirement. The state says schools must do this. We're ahead of the curve and we have been with the support of the Nellie Mae Funds and all this energy and creativity by the leadership team here. So, we're in a really good position to meet a requirement.
So, I'd like to challenge you on one thing on that topic over the course of the next year. And that is leverage whatever you can to get ahead of it with the parents. One of the things that I've found, at least with the board, is that we had a community dinner, I think, a couple of years ago where we had over 125, 130 people. Be more than willing to sponsor something like that to try to get enough of the community out if we can gather up enough interest to get the parents, a subset of parents to get that discussion started early. So, get out ahead of it rather than, you know, snapping it in in the first week of September 16 and have everybody wondering what happened, so. Just to have parents know that they're coming, more than, well, willing to help in that end.
We're very aware.
And I appreciate that all. That's great.
You know what also reminds me of is we had colleges come to our board meeting as well as career folks, kind of like we have community engagement today, is to have those conversations about proficiency-based and what they're looking for. And a lot of what they spoke to were graduate expectations. It'd be interesting to sort of loop back around as this gets, you know, implemented to show colleges what is going on and career folks what's going on to sort of continue to broaden that conversation around what skills are we looking for in the career world? What skills are being addressed inside high schools?
We'll have those two discussions again later.
Yeah, or, you know, and to have them sort of notice what's happening in schools.
And one of the things that we might be able to leverage, kind of back to Mike and Jen's question, is that the Partnership for Change is moving into a different phase. And Amy, has, although Amy has her work cut out for her, Lindsay, the coordinator, has going to have some more time to do different things. And one of the things the leadership has considered is that they, because of their training with, in communications and messaging that they, Lindsay and whoever else they can bring to the process might be really well-poised to help us facilitate some of that work because they've got that experience now.
Great. Just one more. Amy, I know you're kind of sitting in the background here, but we thank you for your help and your time and your energy as well to throwing in here. Appreciate it.
Sure, you know, in terms of the model that this team presented and all their work, really, I've just been learning from them as this process has gone forward, so.
Great. Anybody else got any questions, thoughts, comments? All right, anything else? We've heard it all. And I look forward, I look forward all for now. Great, we certainly hope so. Thank you very much. Okay, moving through public comments, any public comments? We'll have our community engagement here momentarily. And then, I would accept a motion to accept a consent agenda.
So, do you have to add the definite?
So, do you have to add the addendum?
We'll have an addendum to add Andrea Boon to the consent agenda. We'll do that right after. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
You move, you.
A motion.
Motion, second. Okay, any other comments on the consent agenda? I had just one. I just wanted to note that Amanda Natress.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we'll do that in a second. Amanda Natress with the VPA Principles Association Project Excellence Award was a great feat.
Congratulations, yes.
Yeah, that's great.
So, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. An addendum, you got handed out to you, a sheet here for an additional, the fill in the blank for the middle school math science teacher, Andrea Boon, papers here, be added to the consent. So, I would accept a motion to accept that addendum to fill in the consent agenda with Andrea. Second? Okay, any other discussion?
The only thing I would add to this is that Andrea has actually been in the school this year. She's been a student teacher and doing her work through UVM and we had excellent candidates, a great pool, and she rose to the top. She fit right into the Nexus team and we're really excited about her joining us.
Great.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Very good. So, now I would like to invite our folks from tonight here up to the table if you could. We'll get you a name tag so I can call you by somebody other than, hey, you.
Do we need some more? They got theirs, yeah.
I did not. And Maggie, did I miss Maggie? No?
Oh, she's unable to make it.
Ah, okay. Good. Not good that she can't make it, but thank you for letting me know. Let's be clear. So, I want to thank you first for coming again, volunteering a few minutes to help us in our discussion this evening. Just to give you a little bit of background, I took Mike and John through earlier and I think Libby and.
Melissa.
Melissa, I think you guys, you guys have heard it. But we've been on a, since we've moved to the policy governance model, we've taken on a very different focus on the board and that focus is more out than in. For example, not trying to run the school, but making sure the school is run well. It's a very different focus than what we've had in the past. And one of the things that we've done is we've adopted a set of basically guidelines for the leadership team to work with. Basically, they're not conditions, you know, we need this done, but these are the very few things that you can't do, everything else is up to you, how to do it. The other thing we've developed is an end statement and this is part of trying to define what is that? We've been through a college-ready discussion. What does it mean to be college-ready? When a student walks out the door, what do they look like? What is, what is it, when they're into the, to the college, what skills do they bring with them? And then we look back into the leadership team to say, okay, well, we know now what the skills are needed, how do you do that? Not only how do you do it, how do you measure it? How do you show us that we're actually doing it to hold the whole thing together? We then took on a career-ready discussion. We brought in some folks from UVM's unemployment service, escapes me.
Sverian.
Sverian. The soap factory up here, different employers, and asked the same question. When a student walks out our doors, how do we know that they're career-ready? What kind of skills do they bring to the table when they go see? And so, we got a bunch of feedback there and then we turned to the, to the leadership team again and say, okay, well, we know now what it, what it looks like to be career-ready. How do you instill that in the students and then how do you measure to know that we're actually doing it? Tonight's discussion takes on a little bit different thought and that is being locally engaged. What does that mean? How do you know it? When you see somebody doing things, saying things, practicing things, how do you know that they're engaged? And then after the discussion we get done tonight, we'll try to synthesize everything we hear and then turn back to the leadership team and say, how do we do this? What does it look like? What do we need to do it? Because we then have to fit all of these things back into the budget to know that we're supporting it as a community. We know it's important, but we got to support it too. Doesn't necessarily have to be expensive. So, what I would like to open up a discussion tonight is, I would like to actually go around the room, just let us know who you are and where you're from and then we can take on the discussion of what is it, what does it mean to be locally engaged? So, John, maybe if we can start with you.
Okay. My name is John Straup and I teach, I'm on the faculty at Champlain College, mostly teach English teachers and social studies teachers and civic engagement, youth civic engagement especially is a nary of it, just for me. Thanks for inviting me.
Great, thank you for coming.
I'm Melissa Clark. I teach high school mathematics here at Winuski. I'm from Essex Junction and I'm a co-advisor of the Peace Jam Club here.
Hi, I'm Kinzanguru. I come to Winuski High School and I'm a member of Winuski Peace Empower.
I'm Rosie, I'm senior and I'm still in Winuski High School. I'm also a member of Peace.
Hi, everyone. My name is Libby Houghton. I am a tutor coordinator in the building and instructional assistant and also co-advisor of the Winuski Peace Jam Club, very active group.
I'm Ben McShane. I'm an AmeriCorps, I'm serving as AmeriCorps Vista for the City of Winuski's Community Service Department, focusing on parks and recreation.
I'm Mike Winslow. My profession is I work with the Lake Champlain Committee where I coordinate a number of volunteers in different groups, but outside of my professional life, I'm involved with the local Lions Club, the local planning commission and other committees in town, so giving examples of being locally involved.
I'm Kiri Gemma. I'm an AmeriCorps member with the City of Winuski and I'm also a supporter of Peace Jam.
I'm Megan Young. I am also an AmeriCorps member for the City of Winuski, focusing mostly on meals programming for youth. I'm from Cornish, New Hampshire, which has made national use with their school board stuff going on, so it's nice to see a school board that's taking a big interest in this stuff, so it's really nice to see.
Great. Thanks. So, I will open it up as far as, just from a high level then, what really does it mean to when somebody is engaged locally? What is it, what does it mean?
I don't, I, I would say to start off, if it's okay, I'll jump in, that you have some models of what it looks like, you know, some exemplar models. I don't know, I don't know you folks, so I can't say that you're out of the exemplar models, but I do know about Peace Jam and I know the kinds of things that they do. And the reason why I say that they're exemplar models is because I think they do two of the things that, that to me define what locally engaged might mean. And it's not like you're one or the other, you have to do both, but in some way, it's a flexible movement between the two. And I like to think of them as the one side being the joiner side, right, the community participant, the volunteer, the, I'm in a group, I solve community problems, I join things, right? And on the other side is the, is the, the local engagement where you are the advocate, you're the partisan often, you are aware of community issues and you're willing to monitor for your issues and to be an advocate and you know how to advocate for yourself. So, I see it as a sort of this two, two sides that you, you bounce back and, back, back and forth, right? On the one side, you vote, on the other side, you are a member of a community group. And it's not that they're not together, but they can be separated a little bit. That's maybe, and I think the Peace Jam group does a great job of mixing those things, right, being advocates on one hand and being a part of like community cleanup and beautification. So, maybe that to start.
Great introduction for the Peace Jam. Melissa, Melissa, Libby, you want to just give us an overview for those that may not necessarily know what it is you guys do?
Sure.
Do you want to go?
I'll go for the, on a, on a big scale, what Peace Jam is, is an international organization that connects youth to Nobel Peace Prize laureates. So, we are a club that is a part of that larger international organization. Here in Winuski, it started as a multicultural club, but has since sort of grown and transformed into a group of really motivated students involved in community engagement activities as individuals, but also as members of Peace Jam. So, we work on community service, we work towards accelerating our diversity within the school, to working on our leadership skills, and we have several ongoing projects as always that are revolving around those sort of focuses. So, that, that is what Peace Jam is by definition, I suppose.
The Peace Jam is also, their mission is really to educate, inspire and act. And so, they, they get educated by learning about all of the Nobel Peace Prize laureates, really what their missions were for driving peace in the, in the world and the, in the global community. And then they take that education and hopefully they get inspired to come up with their own global call to action project or plan. And then they get to work toward promoting peace in their local community, toward whatever project or plan they have. And then they, they get to act on that plan. And a small part of that action is really going, and I wouldn't, maybe I wouldn't call it small, but going to the Northeast Peace Jam Conference in Connecticut, which has been so wonderfully donated to by many local businesses and our PTO here. So, thanks to that, but really to meet the Nobel Peace laureates who inspire them.
And fellow Peace Jammers from throughout New England. So, talking about community engagement, I think that what Peace Jam represents is, is that multi-tiered engagement piece within the school, within this Winuski community, Chittenden County community, Vermont, outside to New England and beyond. Clearly, we're a global organization, so that piece is tied in. A little bit of a background of this club, this year, we have grown to 17 solid members. We took 17 students to this conference. We meet once a week for an hour on Thursday afternoons with the hope of expanding that because there is a full curriculum that we could be working through and we'd love to have more students have the opportunity to join the group. And maybe you guys would like to talk a little bit about what it is we do within the group and how that makes, inspires some engagement.
So, when we come up with a group, we get a lot of idea from them and also we can get chance to share our idea. And then we come up with this and how we're going to make change in our community. So, like our ongoing project is to teach our community, like basically Winuski High School that we are diverse and we should respect each other cultures and we do international bake sale where we can bring food from different part of country because it's diverse and people, students, they bring foods and so by selling food and also we get like the money and also we are teaching them how it's a, because food and language is a big part of our, like every culture, we believe. So, we teach other people that we should respect each other culture, not only like our culture.
And the upcoming event is the beautification project that we are working on. And so, we as a group, like in growing up there, we went to the community and helped pick up the trash and we show that we are, there is a people who are willing to give their time to community. So, we did that because Mr. Wheeler told us to be forward and we did that and we are glad that. So, we are ready for our beautification project that we are going to do next.
And also what we believe is that we are not just giving community, but we are also getting ideas and what community wants to, wants to take action to make a peaceful community, like not only for our Winuski community, but through the Vermont and then go like expanding. So, we are really happy to be part of Peace Jam and learn about leadership and how to communicate with people from different culture and also sometimes it's challenging, like when you come from like a different part of world and then just come and you have a new language and everything new, so it's hard for you to, like, I don't know how to say, like it's hard for you to be in the school because you don't know anything, you don't know language, you don't know culture, what people are saying. So, like personally, when I came here first, I didn't know anything because I didn't speak English too much and also like I didn't know any culture, like American culture and culture from different, like Thailand, I have friends from Thailand now and friends from Africa, so, and the friend I made, I made that friend in Peace Jam. So, first day when I met Ms. Ed, she told me that, oh, you want to join Peace Jam? And I was like, oh, I want to join Peace Jam because I don't know, I don't have any friend in the school. So, I went there and be in meeting like every, every Thursday after school. So, like that, I improved my English and also I improved my leadership. So, now I'm like involved in different part of organization, so Peace Jam helped me to be who am I now.
I think just by being here, you're showing that leadership. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it. Mike, you have a couple of different involvements and thoughts?
John mentioned the joining piece and the advocacy piece and I, I can't really see the advocacy piece being a definition of community involvement on its own. It has to be part of the joining piece. It has to, a lone advocate saying something on their own doesn't get stuff done until they've joined things, until they've organized pieces. So, I think that's one of the measurements you look for is, is that joining. Can you get these people to break out of their own shells and join groups? One of the challenges I've really seen in our community is integrating the schools with the groups that are out there already. The school, the schools do a lot within the system, but it's a real challenge getting them to work beyond that in the larger community. With the Peace Jam, it sounds like you've defined community. Mike, you had asked me earlier about expanding it to the world. That's exactly what they're doing. How you define the community is going to make a big difference in what parameters you end up measuring. I think of it locally at the Winuski area, it can be at the state area, it could be a targeted advocacy group, but it's still a group working towards something. There are lots of different ways to build that community. And then the other thing I wanted to follow up on what John said, when I think about community involvement, I think of the very basic thing that he mentioned at the end of his talk is voting. Your voter participation levels of your students is a measure of community involvement. That's where you start with that.
I might add to that, staying informed and as an informed voter, but also as you mentioned, if you, if you are an advocate, you need to be advocating with some background knowledge and that is the piece that I think ties the joining and the advocacy together.
Yeah, and I thought about that before coming. You know, I say voting is the basic measure, but informed voting is so much more important. It's just, I don't know how to measure informed voting. I do know how to measure voting rates.
Right.
Maybe for Megan and Ben, from your position, the comment about marrying the schools to the, to the city and local area, you know, some comments on your views of how that works?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the desire from the city is absolutely there to try and marry those two views and to create events where we can sort of gather people in like a Green Up Day or something like that. But then take that one step farther and, you know, get email addresses so then you can continue that in other areas. I think the city is excited to start things like that and to continue it. I mean, even for our summer teen employment, you know, having kid that, you know, was there last year, coming in again this year and sort of continuing that and seeing how that will roll over. And, you know, being able to bring that conversation home back to their families and back to, you know, their siblings and stuff is something that we're excited to see, especially from a youth.
is something that we're excited to see, especially from a youth programs, you know, uh, mindset, you know, starting with the youth and seeing how that breeds into the home. Can you add anything to that?
Um, I guess, from my perspective, to measure engagement and the efficiency of engagement is to measure the level of personal responsibility that's tied with their community focus. Like Peace Jam, these girls both are models of personal responsibility because they're advocating for themselves, they hold themselves well, they have a certain responsibility, not only to themselves, but they see it in the community. So they're taking responsibility for themselves and then pushing it forward. And like the pay it forward thing, it's like, yeah. And I think that with the city, Ben mentioned summer teen employment program, just seeing kids taking the initiative to engage with different groups we serve within the youth programs aspect. So we're down like three quarters of a mile down the road and seeing kids come and be engaged there and, um, you got a level, you can get that baseline level, but to measure that, it's, it's more qualitative. It's not something that you can do in numbers. It's when you see a kid that's starting to take that personal responsibility and transferring it community-wide and thinking about that on a different level than just themselves, which is really hard in high school to do unless they have the, the venues to do it.
That responsibility captures something I've been trying to figure out how to put into words with this. I recently had a process where I was reviewing candidates for a scholarship application and the primary criteria for this particular scholarship was community service. We had eighteen candidates, they were all good, they all did a lot of things, but there was cer- most of them, it felt like they were checking off the box that I had done community service. Of the eighteen, two of them stood up and their application, at least to me, screamed, "I was responsible for the stuff that I did." I, and it's, it's, takes it to another level that's more difficult to manage, to measure, but really is the key.
How did that stand out to you? The, the taking responsibility?
One of the candidates was in the fire department and, you know, so he had invested his time, he was there all the time, he had to go through the trainings, he was available all hours of the day. That was something that said to me, this guy is really involved in the community. And another one was able, basically was following in the per- I, I don't even know if it was a male or female, but was following in their parents' footsteps and talked about all sorts of activities they had done through their church. And it was really clear that this wasn't something they were checking off, it was something they did on a weekly or even daily basis.
So it's almost like that integration of commitment, you know, of taking, and that idea of joining and it becoming a part of who they are?
Yeah, exactly, it's joining and then, the joining different groups and then the group becomes part of who they are, how they define themselves.
It was great to see, at least the tail end, I came in late, the, the presentation that happened before this because it's based off student interest. Like I'm close enough to my high school days where I still remember checking off the boxes because my lo- my interest wasn't important to where I was going. It wasn't like, oh, this student wants this. Uh, like, some of the stuff was just to tick off the boxes. I didn't have any like real emotional investment in it. Like when a student has the ability to express and then carry out an interest of theirs, that's like how passions are formed, that's how investment is created. And like I just think that that was such an important piece of the presentation ahead is like taking that student voice and, cause a lot of students, especially if you're coming from an area where you don't even know the language, you feel like you don't have a voice at that age group. Like it's, it's, and a lot of decisions are made for you. So to be able to find that interest and that passion and then carry it out, like, kids wanna speak. Like people wanna like be heard, whether it's through voices or through actions. Like when someone has something to say, they wanna express it. So.
Katie, thoughts? Perspectives?
Well, Megan said, I really like this shit a lot, yeah. Um, I was just, as she's talking-
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, I wanted to tie all you guys.
Yeah, uh, as she's talking, I was actually thinking of some examples. Recently we did a stream cleaning up with a representative from, uh, the worship? I don't know what is the full name of it. And we had a couple of middle school boys who are like kinda too cool for school and they came and started cleaning up and, uh, then they saw these little fish in the water and they were like, "Oh my god, where are these fish?" And then I explained it to them and then they went on this like long string of questions and were so interested. And then this was like during a snack break and after the snack break, they were literally running to pick up trash and different things that they found. And on our way back, they were still talking about it and they were like, "I, why would anybody litter?" And you could see this like spark of investment forming in these kids who like don't show that. And we see them pretty much every day.
Yeah, it's the inspire and inspired. Like the inspi- to inspire is the act, but when you're inspired yourself, you wanna inspire others.
Oh, absolutely.
Like it's finding that spark.
Yeah, and when you have that spark, it doesn't feel like you're just taking off the box. And when you stop taking off the boxes is, is when you really start to be able to make a difference.
I think that's, sorry, I think that that's the beauty of the global call to action project that these students get to develop is it's based on their interests and what they see as something that they wanna fix or make better in the community that they live in, but also they're getting feedback from the community members themselves. So last year, there was a survey that the students developed on their own that was delivered to over three hundred people in, in, in the local community and brought out some great feedback for the students to drive their global call to action project, which was at that point in time, um, to promote human security and to protect against crime and violence and, and drugs and how to prevent that from happening and educating the community.
And that was, it was remarkable because the students, um, in the dead of winter, in a very, a very cold weekend, we pushed them out the door and in teams of two or three, went door to door-
Gave them a bath highlighted.
-throughout the community-
Yeah.
-without adults next to them. Be- and I, I remember this was, it was a little bit intimidating for everybody and myself included. I wouldn't feel comfortable going door to door and, uh, down a street that I didn't know very well and they did it. And we had two hundred and seventy-nine responses. Um, total, and that was within the school, that we also sent it out via email to school members, went to TAs to, to, to receive, um, student input. But I really thought that door-to-door piece was huge. I, the, the, the results of that survey were very interesting. The most interesting part for me was watching the students come back and say, "We met some really cool people." Yeah, they just could really neat stories about that door-to-door interaction. Um, and that seems like engagement to me, that's the definition.
So I, I have a question, so when I come back to the whole idea of why, you know, the purpose of including being involved in your local community as an ideal for our students? That the conversation seems to be as, as an opportunity for inspir- you know, to inspire passions and finding sort of your place? Is that what, you know, I guess I'm looking for the root of why we think that's an ideal and why it's beneficial for our students?
Why should we even focus on?
Right, right, why would it be in our end statement in a way? You know, what is the, and it seems like some of that, these pieces have been speaking to that benefit of being a part of something? Finding yourself in something else, the advocacy piece, I don't know.
I don't necessarily even see it as the most important for the students, it's the most important for the community.
Right.
I mean, Vermont has a fairly high level of civic engagement compared to other states and we wanna maintain that. But i- if you're not feeding the younger people into it, then we're not maintaining it. And it thinks of, it just, uh, part of the reason I joined the Lions is to expand my community. Most of the people in that club, I didn't know before I started it and so it was a risk for me, but I wanted to be involved in a community in, in a way that I hadn't been previously and, and it's been really valuable for that purpose. It's been one of the main reasons I've done there. But I really think it, it's serving the community rather than serving myself.
But yet expanding your personal commu- like finding-
Yeah.
-a group, finding more people to expand that social community.
And civic organizations around the state are begging for people, uh, around the world, around the country. Ever since television has become prominent in the sixties, civic organization commitment has dropped precipitously. They're folding all over the place. I see it as, I, I think they're groups worth trying to save, but as a sta- as a nationwide community, we're not doing it.
To speak to your point also, um, when you have a community that fosters the interests of your youth, your youth are more likely to stay in that community. Like if, if that retention rate will be higher if you have a community that stands behind focusing on what's best for your children. Like that's just the way that the world has always worked. Like yes, there's more avenues for us to travel now and go out and explore, you know, like, "I'm gonna go live in California for a year, but I'll come back and maybe live on my parents' basement, I don't know." Like there's like more, like transportation is like a big thing now, but like when you have a community that like stands behind your kids and like isn't just telling them to check off the boxes and that that's the way that life is, you're gonna retain your, the students that you wanna stay. Like, that's just the way that it is.
One of the questions I, I have is, um, how, how do you create kind of the, the container, the foundation and encourage that engagement without requiring or being too kind of pushy with it? And without defining it too much for what it is for people, what it is for students? So that they can kind of define it.
Instead of just checking the box.
Yeah.
I think opportunities.
I was just gonna say, I think the most important piece is accessibility. I know that Peace Jam runs after school right now and that loses more than half of the students who would want to be involved in Peace Jam because they have after-school obligations, whether it's going home to family members to cook for them, going to a part-time job, doing other volunteer opportunities outside of school. And so I think it's just providing the opportunities and making it accessible for students within the school day, which is why that wonderful model that we just saw previously provides internships and things like that is a great way for that to happen.
I would also add that there's a, there is a bit of a strength in numbers mentality, I think, that happens at, at least with, um, with our students. They have grown in, as individuals because the group has grown as, in, in, in its size. And so I think that those opportunities and, and accessibility to students is important, but there, there does need to be a certain amount of critical mass that begins, that, that begins to develop. And I know that this, that has happened with this group finally, it really has taken hold. But I'd love to see more of those opportunities happen within the school that can then be kind of filtered out into the rest of the community.
To Rosie and Kenzai, um, there's, what'd you say, seventeen, uh, students involved? Do you see more? Do you guys actually go out and recruit? Do you talk a lot about it?
Yeah, we went to Orion Center sometime on Saturday and they were open at, at one P M. So we went there and like work on our project, so.
Yeah, um, the Ms., uh, Melissa already mentioned that, uh, there is a time cause after school we have a lot of things to do, you go home and cook food for family and look at, uh, brother and sister. So a lot of memory we are missing cause we, we have our own like, um, responsibility for our home and doing work from school and like other comm- community service. So it will be great if we have that, uh, that time in the school time, like during the school day. So we'll get more to do work and a lot of peo- a lot of student will engage in the club like this. So they will, um, help themselves also and also help community to make a better place to live.
Where are the boys?
We've been wondering that same thing.
They're playing basketball, the Orion's like-
When you look at the makeup of Peace Jam, right, it's primarily young women. We have two young women as school board reps. You know, and, and I'm not saying that the boys aren't doing anything, my guess is they're doing other stuff. Whether it's, it's community engagement or not, I don't know.
Well-
But yeah, sports is, is a big attraction.
Yeah, I was gonna say, both of our boy members, um, actually are part of V Y C C. Which is after school on Thursdays and every other day of the week.
It's an accessibility issue.
It's the accessibility issue and that's probably true of a lot of the other boys in the school as well.
I'm not a teacher, but like, idealistically, integration with the curriculum seems like the idealist way to do this. Like, instead of having it be like an individual, like, project, which, I mean, there is good in that too, but having it be like the experience and like the ability to experience many different things and different teachers and different groups of people and kind of seeing where your fit is. Like, having a science group, a science teacher take their class, you know, once a month to do a service project. It's not presented like, this is community service, you need these requirements to graduate, but have them do something that they can tie back into their curriculum. And like I said, I'm not a teacher, so I don't know how doable that is or how easy that is to do. But like, then the kids get the requirements, it's part of their learning experience and it ties in with what they're learning already in their classroom.
We, we have two boy male members this year that are, have been very active or very involved. I, I think again, there's a critical mass piece that's missing on, in that front for us, that we, um, we don't have a whole group of boys that are chomping at the bit to join us on Thursday afternoons. And I'm not sure exactly why that is, I know that the interest is there, the curiosity is there, but there seems to be a little bit more of a, a fear involved also. And that also might come from the leadership, uh, we are two female advisors. Does that have something to do with it? And I, I, that is something we've seriously considered, how do we bring a, a male leader to bring some of those, uh, some of our high school boys into a club like this? And not just Peace Jam, it could be anything, but.
It's also a national statistic that women volunteer at a higher rate than men.
And that makes sense as well.
Just saying.
Yeah.
This is interesting, it, this reminds me of a conversation, I'm Hal, I'm from Partnership for Change. I had many years ago with, um, with, with, you know, uh, men my age, we were trying to figure out how do we, how do we create a space that we can get together and, and build community and connect? And we came to the conclusion as men that we needed something to kind of do. Like is it working on our car or, you know, like that physical thing that can draw us in, which becomes the vehicle for connecting and building relationships? So I think we gotta look at it differently if we wanna really attract young youth and men, um, to be involved. Because I think we, we operate a little di- differently than, than women. So it just popped in my mind.
It is funny you mention that because the m- male that, the largest male representative that we had last year took ownership of the, the money during the bake sale and it was tangible, it was something that he did. And that was his job and he was really, um, it was important for him. And as soon as that kind of dissipated or went away, he went away. And so I think that that is, that's an important, that's an important piece.
Yeah, what's the hook that can bring us together?
Are there again the accessibility in, in many different, so not just scheduling, but also tangible opportunities?
Yeah.
The other thing that comes to mind, I, I was involved, uh, after my life at Good News Garage, I started Neighbor Keepers as a way to, you know, bring, um, community together and create circles of support so folks can, um, have support to, you know, follow their, their dreams and goals. And what I learned in that whole experience is the importance of reciprocity. And we can't always assume that people know what it is and know why it's important. And people want to give back. And if we don't model it and talk about it and, and, and value it, um, you know, it just doesn't get absorbed. So I think, to me, that's the lifeblood of relationships and that's what, kind of what we're talking about here. So, um, and I, I remember working with families who just like, just, you know, living day to day and, and by the time they opened up and there was enough trust going on, um, they really blossomed and, and giving back was really important for them as well, because I think we all wanna belong. And that's a great way for us to feel that, you know, we're, we're valued and, and we're important because we, we do have something to give back, no matter what our, you know, situation might be. And that's really important, I think, for relationships.
So, um, I'll, just to add a couple of things here at the end, these are all really great ideas of the image of, uh, local engagement. But a couple of things maybe that you all could think about, like, doing, um, uh, as a school board. One is, um, to set the context for community readiness as being equal to career and college readiness and to be talking about that. To set the context that, um, oh, and I, and I mean that by like award systems and, or badges or to honor the, um, the ach- or to honor the, um, the achievements, to set up, uh, small grants for people to apply for. And to try to achieve, right, to make it achievement-oriented in that way, to set a context. Um, another is to focus, and, um, the best way that I know to do it is through service learning, but to connect youth, teachers, and community members in sustained relationships. And those relationships all have to be revolve around a, um, an asset model of youth, right? Not a deficit model, that they're just, like, they, they can, they can do. Um, and so those, I g- I mean, I just don't think, there's the relate, the way, the, the reason why Peace Jam is so, such a functioning, um, organization is because of the longstanding relationship of a, of adult mentor to young people, is that's, that, so how do you build that, um, those relationships? Service learning is one really good way to do that, I think. Um, and then, uh, the last, uh, the last part is at the level, okay, so what, what do you do in the classroom? And I think to focus on and spend a long time, much longer time than you would, on discovery, the discovery of community issues. So, set the context, get community members and teachers to work together with youth as assets. Um, and spend a long time helping young people discover their community, discover what to be locally engaged in, as opposed to like, okay, we've got, we've got a program that we're ready to go for, right, and who's gonna join us in the program? But to spend a long, much longer time than you think that you need. And it's kind of risky, 'cause you got a lot to do, you know? So to spend a lo- a long time figuring that out.
Something like a survey, different ideas?
That was, that was a year-long, you know, a year-long project to, to try to. But I mean, they used all of the, all of the skills that you would want in a social studies class, a social scientist, you know? They created a survey, they, um, they analyzed this data, they reported on this data. They've, they've orally, um, reported on this, on this, on what they found, um, yeah.
So it's interesting, um, started on the board, um, and I was, I was where Mohammed is right now. Come to the board meeting after having all this stuff thrown at you, trying to figure out exactly where you are, get yourself oriented, and I'm going through the, I think it was in month three or four or even five, finally getting down into the, some of the detail, and one of the items in there was student engagement. And had attendance records. Being in the chair isn't engaged. At least you showed up, probably better than some of your other options, right? But if that's all you're there, you're not really engaged. The other thing, with tying that to this though, w- we make a measurement right now of student hours. You're gonna have community service for X number of hours. Well, that's good, but were you engaged? You're sitting in the chair maybe, but, so just some, some thoughts on, ultimately, it's not necessary, I don't think, that every student going out of here is, you know, a hundred percent head over heels engaged. But we've gotta have a leadership team with the staff, being able to say, we've met this condition. Or better yet, here is where we are with this condition this year. And then at the end of next year, we're here by the same measurement. We're, we're just a little bit better than we were on these met, on these tones, what are those? Depth of engagement, right?
Survey your students.
Survey the students.
I, I would also, you, you mentioned hours of engagement, I would think of responsibility hours. There are the hours that you go up and you pick up trash with everyone else on Greenup Day, and there's the hours that you spend organizing other people, and those should count for more. And again, you're not gonna get every student, but your goal is for the school community to get better at that.
I, 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 you know, I see it as, as an effort to have the community look on the school as a good source of good citizens. If I need help, I know where to go. If I need whatever, I, I know where to go and I know they're gonna support me. Ultimately, to have that, and I don't think we've had that in the past. I don't think the community sees as a school as a, a source of assets, I think, it was, was the, was the term, right? You hate to break it all the way down to sound like a, you know, math problem, but.
Well, and.
A source of.
And kids said that also in the Utherus Behavior Survey from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and thirteen, was there, was, I think it was like upwards of sixty to seventy percent of students reported, we don't feel valued by the community. So there's both sides of that and understanding, uh, what does that look like? You know, how, how do we value each other? And I think a big part of it in Winuski is connecting with each other around different activities, you know, whether, like this year going to the Senior Center was a huge deal. We had a group of seniors who all of a sudden had a totally different perspective on high school students and particularly high school students, um, that have come to Winuski as refugees.
Back page of our newsletter a couple of months ago had four or five pictures of, of high school students helping seniors with their iPads, iPhones, you know? Well, better source, but how do you, you gotta get them out there, so.
Shit, too, a hurry a little bit, we have come a long way in the last couple of years. You've got the pumpkin carving, uh, Courtney Carpet does tons of things and really gets kids motivated and engaged in community service. And the city has, has students on their committees and.
Yep.
So we're getting there, but it's good to have more in-depth.
The opiate conversation that Julie is, Julie is facilitating, yeah.
I think, I mean, this is an example, in fact, that students are invited to join in this discussion. Right? I mean, I think that's acknowledging the, the ability of, that you have to, to participate.
The voice that you have.
So all of those pieces, me included, you must have joined. It's a good start.
And, and so again, to Rosie and, and Ken Zang, uh, as you go through the next year or two here, just don't hesitate to shout, your voice is, is definitely needed, as a group or as individuals, it doesn't matter. Anything else? I, you know, your time here, I can't thank you enough for coming to join us.
Appreciate it.
We will probably invite you back at some point to say, here we are, where are we?
I just wanna share one thought, when, when you're talking about engagement, I'm thinking about, you know, what is, what is authentic engagement in a classroom? And the one word that comes to me is care. And I, I, I'm reminded of John McKnight's definition of care, it's the consenting commitment of citizens to one another. So when, when, when I feel that you care about me, that, that can make all the difference. And, and I'll, I'll wanna be engaged, I wanna be a part of whatever. Um, so it kind of comes down to that whole adult-youth relationship. And, and if we're not modeling what, what care really means, how, how do we imagine kids understanding what it is? So we have to be mindful about our interactions, our behaviors. And is that young person really receiving from us this whole notion of care?
So the idea of internships in whatever form they may take, associating kids with community members, but back to our discussion earlier, not having it be after-school or on a weekend when I got other things to do.
And it can be as basic as teachers just really investing in personal well-being of students. You know, if they take an interest and make that student feel special and give them a reason to be better and rise above, then that right there is integrating it right into the school day and making committees out of that and interest of other students.
Start thinking about my job and your job after this discussion, I'll take mine. But that's where we're going, together. So it's, it's how do we get, how do we get the, you know, out the other end and have good kids going into a good community, making it.
And staying in our community, I love that.
I mean, community service is such a broad topic, like, it's, it's so broad. Like, you have mathematics, you don't just have algebra, you have this like huge array of topics. And in community service, people, especially when you're a kid and you're just looking at community service, all right, what are my basic requirements most of the time? Like, how do I get this done? How do I move to the next task, move past it? But when you allow that exploration and like commit the time during the day when the mentor models are available and willing and energized to give that personal time and that, like, you know, that passionate, like, modeling for them, like, I don't, it becomes way broader, the, like, options that are out there for that community service, instead of just being like, that tunnel vision of just like, oh, I'm just gonna go wash dishes at the community center because I need to get those, I need three hours, I'm gonna get it done, it's done, instead of being like, well, what is community service? What are the repercussions of this? What are, like, what can I gain? What can my friends gain? What can the community gain? Having those discussions, 'cause you don't really have those discussions. Like, those aren't discussions that are being had, and I think that having this, that model, like, it just, it's like, well, that makes so much sense to have that, like, you know, like, when you have kids that you're asking for things, like, you're asking them, like.
We could do credit, we can give credit for a community service project, if you can tie it to the, you know, some of the basics.
Or like, I am your teacher, I'm going to take you, like, I'm your teacher, I'm going to invest in your community service, uh, I don't know. Or like, that's something that I, my heart speaks to too, like, I mean, if I had kids that were like, let me come garden with you, I'd be like, oh yeah, let's do this. Like, I, and they'd see my passion and like, I would be inspired by seeing them with me and they would see that. Like, it's not something that would be ticking off a box.
That's something that Hale said too, that really stuck with me, that's the idea of modeling, the, the faculty as models for community service and then pulling the kids with them.
Yeah.
And, and other members of the community, yeah.
'Cause I was thinking about the fire department, you know, that that is, you know, a lot of boys and virgins do that, and it's like there's, it's a house of models, you know, that really take the care. You're part of a community, we're, we're here together in this piece too.
That, that reminds us of me, of our check-ins that we do every Thursday with the Peace Jam group. And that time is as much for the students as it is for us as advisors. Because oftentimes we will, we'll forget, like, what is the purpose of this? Why are we here? We're exhausted, we need to be at home, you know, I need to feed the dog, whatever. And it really is inspiring and reinvigorating to see the wonderful things that the students do all of the time. And that is so inspiring to us as, as advisors, that it really.
I mean, I, I just, and every single week, Thursday is the best day.
Mm-hmm.
For that forty, I mean, really, it isn't even an hour.
It's like forty-five minutes.
We have forty-five minutes together. And we come in and often we do check-ins where we go around the group and somebody might start off by kind of saying, oh, I'm really, I'm not so good today. By the time you come back around, they're smiling, they're laughing, or they'll just admit, you know, I'm not feeling so good today, but now I'm better.
Yeah.
Because I'm here, part of a group, so I think that's, that's really.
Great, well, again, thank you very, very much, and, uh, we appreciate your, your time and, uh, hopefully we'll be in touch with some success, or you'll see some success stories.
Sure we will.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. They put on here the late champagne, that's who I work with. That's fine. I feel like I was talking more about the volunteers.
I liked him, you know, taking the community right in, rather than.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Which is great.
It's great.
Right, around an inch.
I feel that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
You are an amazing typer, my dear. You were typing while you were doing this, and I just. Right over my head, something I could never do.
Thanks, babe, take care. Sam, Megan, thank you. You did? Oh, okay. I saw your thoughts after Amida, it was great. I'm just waiting to hear, I still haven't heard from V Y C C.
But part of that is, is.
Well, I mean, once we get V Y C C motivated.
Yeah. Seed order, the initial planning and then.
Well, they might also be the seeds, I mean, they do, they do all that stuff and they produce their own seeds too. Yeah. Sure, good. Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, I know, gotta keep going, keep pushing forward. Yeah. No kidding, right?
Yeah. I know. Do you know when they're supposed to decide? What, the deadline was just last week? It was. Time flies when you're having fun, yes. That's all right. Stress is good for ya, just gotta deal with it. It's good stress. Right, yes. All right, great.
You got lemon too. Did you push raspberry?
I did.
See, me too.
All right, so, uh, moving in, a Partnership for Change update, we haven't been a little bit.
Sure.
So we appreciate you coming to share with us.
Sure enough. Well, uh, we learned last Friday that we're gonna get refunded.
Yes.
For another three years with the Nellie Mae Education Foundation.
Awesome.
We are, um, expecting to receive one point five million for the next three years. We're, we're, we're now a staff of three, myself, Lindsay Cox, and Amy Dixon. Amy is the coordinator for our Partner Teacher Program that's here as well as Burlington High School. Um, and, and, you know, Lindsay will continue to handle logistics and communication and the reporting that we do to, to Nellie Mae. The next three years, we're gonna be kind of fading into the sunset, which is the design of, of the grant. We receive forty percent of what we received for the first three years, three point seven five million. And, and we're really zeroing in on the Partner Teacher Model. Um, we've gotten some, some great preliminary, um, um, data showing some increased student engagement, so we think we're on the right path with that model, where teachers are able to pair up or team up and have twenty percent of their time to plan and to really practice their teaching, so that we can move towards a student-centered and personalized proficiency-based learning system. Um, we had a, a Steering Committee meeting a few months ago where we had all the Partner Teachers come and, and share out, and it was just electricity in the air. I mean, they were just really excited to have the space and time to kind of reflect and to create new ways of delivering their, their, their teaching. So, uh, we're looking forward to probably a lot more engagement with the funder in terms of technical assistance support and evaluation. Um, they're looking really to, um, see how the work that the Partnership has supported really be owned by the districts, and that's kind of our focus going forward.
So the second phase is a sustainability, how do we keep whatever we put in place in place and let it? So, the second phase is a sustainability, how do we keep whatever we've put in place in place and let it stay?
Absolutely, so, so they asked, asked some pretty specific questions on how and who is gonna be involved in supporting this at the district level. So, you know, we convinced them that, yes, we have a plan in place and, and going forward for the next three years, we hopefully can make that happen. So, yeah, we're, we're pretty excited about how it's kind of became this amorphous idea, and now we have some real focus, I think, going forward. In making the shift of, of how we operate it to where we need to operate. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell, how we're evolving.
It seemed like the, the model, the house model that we just saw is evidence of that sustainability, that it's really, the teacher, the leadership team is really driving this change of getting to where we want to go, even. Impressive.
Yeah, my, one of my, one of the things I think is gonna challenge us as we move forward is the quicker we get into the proficiency, it sounds like our colleges around here are actually, you know, accepting it, have a method to accept. The proficiency-based, I don't even know if you call it a grading schedule, but the, the assessment being a proficiency-based assessment. So, that'll be, that'll be key to make sure that, that ties in, they understand what they're getting.
And I, and I really think in our reapplication process, I think the, the strength and the performance of Winuski. In terms of the, the leadership team, the board, I think, was, was, was one of the anchors for, for us going forward, and I think. Seeing how Burlington is maybe trying to shift to Emily, what you guys have been all about, I think really kind of, I think, helped Nellie Mae really make the decision. With the new superintendent coming on board, and, 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 you know, how we went through a process to use a student-centered learning lens to rewrite that job description. And how even the new board in Burlington wants to become a policy governance board. So, so we really, you know, kudos to you for leading the way, because I think Burlington has a lot to learn. And hopefully, we can make that, that happen with getting everybody in the room and, and building those relationships.
Looking back on the last three years, you know, trying not to run the school but ensure it is run well, has been just a huge focus for us, it's.
Absolutely.
We actually stood in the parking lot a few times after saying, wow, don't, don't understand what we just went through, but it was a lot better than where we've been, so. It just, it just had a different focus and feel.
The change is slow, but you're seeing the change happening, like, you're seeing the actual, and it will be sustainable, because it's being every year, budget-wise, thought about and cared for, and, you know.
It's picking up momentum.
Yeah.
You know, sort of internal momentum.
Yeah.
And the partnership with the, you know, the Nellie Mae backing has certainly given us a huge, huge step forward in being able to at least focus some of the direction.
Right.
And I think you, you missed part of the first piece of, of the discussion that the, the staff gave us on the house model and whatnot, though you may have heard it. But part of it is gonna be getting, you know, parents and making sure that the, the change is communicated well, and I think we'll probably need some help with the community group there too.
Absolutely.
Well, there was a pretty successful model that we, you know, started with the learning conversations, you know, considering the information that was gathered to, to launch graduation expectations. That are the cornerstone of now, what our kids are gonna be teaching across content areas, like, that's become the focus, and that was generated through learning conversations. And a facilitated group and student voice and so many multiple stakeholders involved in that, that it would seem like that would be a good way to keep that momentum going forward, is, okay, we did this, now here, here's a new place that we are, let's have more conversations around this.
Part, part of the issue with that, you gotta be careful in, in thinking that the people you're serving today are the ones that set the rules before, right? Because, because, one, the turnover that we have, but you really wanna make sure that you don't ever assume that the people that helped you make the rules are still here, not all the people are gonna be twenty-five, thirty years in the district like Jill and I were.
Right, true, but the model of conversations, the model of engaging the community as well as the parents, as well as the kids, that model works for whoever's coming into that model.
And it's gonna be, it's really, really important, because.
It's a big shift.
I already, yeah, and because I'm in the community and I have high school students, I, I was involved in one of the meetings they've already done where they brought the teachers in, heard this, students and parents in. To start, you know, talking to them about the GX expectations and proficiency, moving towards proficiency-based, and honestly, as a parent, I was like, what? And I know some other parents have some current concerns also, so it's gonna be a very key thing that we as a school board make sure we're educated enough to put it out there, because, you know.
And offer to help bring it out.
Right, because we have, I mean, it's gonna be key into making it successful, it's because you don't want, we don't wanna lose students either, because parents are thinking they're not getting what they need for their education.
Your educate, my kids' education doesn't look like mine, therefore it must not be good, we gotta be careful with that.
Exactly, that's right, you have to be extremely careful, and so.
Right.
And I'm all for it, don't get me wrong, I just think it's gonna have to be very well communicated.
Well, one of the things that's gonna be done differently going forward with Nellie Mae is communication. Up until now, we've had, each site had its own, you know, individual communication consultant, so they're backing off that approach, and they put out an RFP. And they wanna bring in the right firm or person who has the experience to work in communities like ours, that are very diverse. And, and, and then we will work closely with that, that person or firm, and whatever our needs might be around communication, we will work through them, so. As you're thinking going forward about different needs around communication, that's, could be an opportunity to do something really different. And have some real expertise involved to help us make it happen.
That'd be awesome.
Yep, we can be nimble. Absolutely, great, it's, uh, good to hear that we've been re-upped.
Yes.
Excellent news, thank you.
We can now look forward.
Yes, absolutely, great.
I just wanna thank Hal too and Lindsay for all the work that they've done, but particularly in these last, I don't know, eight or ten months with the reapplication and the uncertainty that occurred, and. I know that there was a lot of advocacy going on that we probably never knew about, never heard about, and it's greatly appreciated that you've really pushed us to, to this point, and, and now we're, now we're kind of have that. Now we can get back to the plan and start doing the work and, and not have that uncertainty in front of us anymore, so thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Have we got a joint, a joint board?
Yeah, it's our joint board, do we submit?
Yeah, we're, we're.
We should be getting a doodle poll soon.
Yeah, we're going to doodle, doodle, we're going the doodle route.
The doodle, alrighty.
And it could be a weekday evening timing possibly, because the Saturday thing is just tough.
Yeah, we didn't get enough.
We did, but they.
Yeah, yeah.
Scratch off my calendar and open that Saturday, yeah?
So, stay tuned.
Well, whatever we can do to help.
Yes.
From either an advocacy or whatever standpoint.
Sure.
We're here.
Yeah, I actually have a couple of thoughts and I could maybe add a little bit to it. You know, 'cause the, we, we just got together with the negotiation, for a negotiation training from the, what do you call it?
The SBA.
The SBA, and we had a lot of Burlington school board members there, and we had some great conversations and.
Oh, great.
So, you know.
Starting, starting.
I think it, yeah, it's been starting, so, it'd be awesome to really keep that working. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Now, one item that we've been neglecting, I'll say, in that, let's see, put it in a different context. Went to Policy Governance 101 with Mohammed back in, I don't know, April, we went up to Montpelier and took the basic refresher class all over again, which is always good, 'cause you can sit through with a very different focus. And one of the items was the board actually doing monitoring reports on our piece of. Our, our policies, our, our board policies, and so that's essentially Sections three and four. So, I put together a board report that I would like to talk through and/or accept and talk about the future of those, and that was with the Unity of Control, so that is in your packet. Like to take on thoughts, this will be part of our board measurement of how we are doing against the policy governance. Policies or statutes or protocol, if you will, so. Just wanted to gather up your, your thoughts on what's in here and. How we. Accept these through time, and how we rotate them through the board, and.
Thought we had it already in place to be rotating them, when we did our very first, um. When we did our very first, when we were doing our very first ends discussion, we're treating, I thought we ran through and did, you plug these into the year for us monitoring, do you still have that calendar?
I, I do, we got away from it upfront, only because we decided that we were so new in it, we didn't, I mean, for a year, it's not.
Then maybe now that we've been going on that year, we start bringing it back up and you start from the beginning and just shift it.
And that's why I did this one, that's why we did three one first. And so, I would like to take thoughts on this one, except, and then.
Unity of Control Monitoring Report, okay.
Yeah, and just a monitoring report, I'd say, and, and most of the data came from Sean, because it is the interaction or interference, depending on how you do it. In his ability to get his job done, that, that this speaks to.
I say this looks up really good, and thank you for taking the time.
Okay, and so I report this to be that we are in compliance, and Sean, I think we had talked that, that this was, you know, this worked. So, I will set this in and continue the checklist that I've got for Sean in, in the.
So, is this the, are we adding this, are we accepting this now?
Yes, that's, that would be my request, is that we have a motion to accept the monitoring report for the Unity of Control Policy 3.1. As written, second, Mohammed, second. Okay, any other discussion? Alright, I would accept a motion to accept the Unity of Control Monitoring Report, aye?
Aye.
Nay? Other? Oh, okay. So, as we move forward here, do you wanna rotate through, you want me to put a schedule together? I'll give you a real serious hint, I didn't do this from scratch, so, I will, I will tell you.
Good, why reinvent the wheel?
I did not do it from scratch, but the thought has to be, did we actually do this?
Right, right.
And how did we actually do this, so.
It brought something up for me, we, when we first started Policy Governance, we would sort of monitor ourselves, there was like a little checklist to make sure we were, I don't know if that's something that, I mean, obviously, that's not about unity of control, but it is about sort of monitoring our own governing process and making sure we're kind of keeping the big picture in mind. I don't know if every now and again it.
Do you wanna do that quarterly?
Sure.
We can bring it in quarterly and just make sure we're.
Because it's nice to sort of see the bullet points again, oh, right, oh, okay.
And rather than just this meeting, it is have we done this in the recent past, rather, if we do it quarterly, Mohammed, just for you, that was a checklist of, I don't know, twenty items, maybe.
Twenty little things, just to kind of keep them fresh as we, oh, right, there's that.
Even our, like, little check sheet we did.
Yeah, yeah.
We take five minutes.
Yeah, quarter, yeah, like quarterly, just to.
Bring that back.
Keep ourselves.
Honest and transparent. Mike, if you don't wanna tally them, I can do that for you.
Okay, I'll, I'll give.
I thought would make it easier.
Yeah, I'll give you the form that I use now, to, to at least start with, or.
Well, I didn't say I was gonna like, change it.
You did just say you were gonna.
I said I would tally it.
Oh, okay, okay.
I can go through it if you want me to, though.
Okay, okay, as far as monitoring reports, we do have quite a few of these, so I'm gonna, I'm putting, for the June meeting, I wanna have the annual agenda put together. And so, I'll, I'll filter these through like we've done with Sean, for the, we're gonna put the ends in next year to start getting a monitoring report on ends. And for these, I'm thinking every other month to do one, rather than every month, and I'll put a schedule together like I do for the newsletter, try to alternate it.
And I would say be mindful, like, if we have a lot going on on the agenda, maybe stick a, stick one in there if we have time.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, just because some months are busier than other months, and it would make sense to.
Yeah, and I think after a year through an annual agenda, I think we're starting to get an idea where we've got a little bit of, of leeway to do that, so, we can do that.
When you said put it on a schedule like the article, meaning that we would all be responsible for one, okay, okay.
Yep, 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 and I can show you how I put this together, and we can talk through it when it's returned and get you, get you started and getting a starting point, and once we get them going.
Did you take me out the writing of articles?
No, but I can give you topics, I'll work, we'll work on that.
No, you can't get out of that.
I'm pretty sure I missed one.
That's okay.
I know, I saw someone did it.
Alright, so, accepting the unity, I will put together in, for June on the annual agenda, a monitoring schedule for the rest of our Sections three and four, governance processes, and the board management delegation. Alright, on to governance and the student report to the board, appreciate you waiting.
Yes, uh, so, April showers bring me flowers, it's May showers right now, in like, really hot weather, um. Uh, so, we'll start off with, uh, BYCC, although it's mentioned in, um, earlier papers before, um, BYCC is started after April break, and like, last year is the after-school farming program that allows students to learn about farming in the community, be able to cook and eat foods of all kinds of cultures. And students are still able to receive half credit of science by participating in the biology aspect of the program. And, um, although we were, unfortunately, we weren't able to participate this year due to scheduling conflicts and, um, busyness, we were just, we were still able to connect with them. And speaking of gardening, uh, there's also more expansion of gardening, um, little bits here and there, uh, kindergarteners have started taking care of their own raised garden beds in the school. And, um, uh, you can check it out on the school's Twitter, but there's a picture of the kindergarteners adding soil to their raised garden beds, and I think they're expecting to start planting soon. On April thirtieth, WCX interviewed Maida Townsend, uh, which is a previous French teacher here, and now a fellow band member, still has a connection with Winuski. The video featured the high school band as they played the final countdown, and even included a little pun saying that, for Maida Townsend, it's not the final countdown yet, ha, ha, ha. But Ms. Townsend is definitely a super senior, and the segment is linked on our website if you'd like to check it out. On May second, it was Green Update, students came to school on an early Saturday morning to help the community become more green, and so they walked around Winuski all around the town, the city. And picked up some trash to help clean up and really make Winuski a more greener and cleaner place. There are also pictures of how much trash and the, the students who came together on Twitter as well. On May sixth, the Winuski Middle High School Band participated in the All-State Marching Parade in Middlebury, um, playing Bruno Mars Uptown Funk, and, uh, it was a too hot. Hot damn, of a parade, but everyone had a blast.
That was part of the song.
That makes sense.
I'm glad you interpreted that, girl.
Students working with the Peace and Justice Center have successfully raised over one thousand dollars in donations and sales for the Apollo earthquake proceeds, so, um, earlier in the month, there was a bake sale to help, and. There, all the money was raised from donations and selling the food.
And I think Ken's arm was more the driving force behind all of that.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yeah. And, um, if you still wish to show your support, there are still some upcoming events, there's the Benefit Concert this Friday at North Winuski Avenue in Burlington, and a dinner fundraiser this Sunday at the North End Studio, Burlington. Um, students of the Science Department also went on field trips in the last two weeks in the community, um, to Lake Champlain Sailing, and also a really nice nature walk on one of the hottest days of the month.
Fun. Just a thing here.
Yes, hot. On May eleventh was the induction ceremony for the students coming into the National Honor Society, and, um, also a farewell to last year's students. And the incoming students learned what was required to be a student in the National Honor Society, and afterwards, they were able to enjoy, enjoy cake and have a good discussion. and have a good discussion with each other. Um, also earlier today, May thirteenth, uh, I got to, I got together with the Partnership for Change again and went on a trip today to Hanover, New Hampshire to visit Hanover High School's council. Um, the council, what they do is similar to what we visited in Pittsfield, except this one has lasted for thirty, forty years. Um, this council is completely student-led, consists of students, um, with one faculty advisor and it's a very, um, very judicially, uh, structured type of system where there's a treasurer, there's a moderator, there's a public relations officer, there's a secretary, it's amazing, it's a very professional system. And BHS hopes to input a system like this in their school in the near future, so. Perhaps one of the most exciting things to happen, uh, this Friday, News Channel forty-four, twenty-two, um, is coming to do their cool school segment on Winewski. So, starting at five AM, they'll be interviewing students and teachers about the cool stuff going on in our school.
Five AM.
Five AM.
We're being interviewed at five AM.
Mm-hmm, they'll, they'll be asking
Thank you.
Thank you, it was very
Get the pressure off for somebody else.
Yeah, they'll be asking, uh, they'll be interviewing students and teachers about stuff from mentoring to peace jam to us student representatives the business support games class, the guitar two class will also be playing, and the band will be hosting a pep rally at eight thirty in the morning. If we can wake up.
Yeah, interesting to see how peppy the high schoolers are already there.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Yes.
Wow.
Yep, uh, there's a middle school dance, uh, going on at the same, at the same night as prom, forty-thirty, and speaking of prom, tickets have been sold for prom, so if you guys want some chance. Prom is on Prom is on Friday, May fifteenth, at a surprise locations, the students will gather at the school around six thirty, well, they, they will be taken to the secret location. It's a masquerade, uh, as well.
It'll be a secret.
See, we guys are just sweet.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Uh, Spring to the Arts week starts next Monday at the O'Brien Center, it kickoff there. At four to five thirty, there'll be artwork displayed, uh, all around and musical performances, including a song that the entire school has pu- been practicing, but really whoever shows up gets to sing it, so. Uh, throughout the week, art will be displayed in our lobby and on May nineteenth, as part of Spring to the Arts, the middle and high school will be having their final pops concert. So, starting at seven, you guys if you can.
Yeah.
Also on May twenty-first, the JFK will be having their last concert at six thirty at the POC. The students of Ms. Pocket's Effective Communications class continue to enjoy their mentoring sessions. With only two days left, the students are feeling a little down, but they will continue to bring their effort and enthusiasm. At the last day of mentoring, the students will bring their mentoring buddies up into the high school classrooms. They will have, be playing some couple, a couple of board games, just celebrating in fact, but they got to mentor them, it's gonna be nice. Uh, to celebrate the end of the year, the middle school and the high school will be holding their own Spartan Games and these are basically a day uh, de- dedicated to field games where grades of each section, so middle school separate, high school separate. They will compete against each other to see which grade juniors will win.
Juniors.
Of course.
Junior. Um, the middle school will be having their games on June eighth, the high school is currently planning their, so. Uh, as the end of the year approaches, fifth graders and eighth graders will be learning about their transition into the new grade. Yeah, scary. Uh, students from the Effective Communications class will be holding a little seminar for the eighth graders to introduce, introduce them to high school. And give them knowledge about what it's like. As for sports, the varsity baseball team has a home game on the fourteenth, they play against Hazen at four thirty. The middle school baseball team has a home game on the fifteenth, they play against Georgia at three. The varsity softball team has a home game on the fourteenth, they play against Hazen at four thirty. The middle school softball team has a game today at Virgin's, started at four fifteen, so, thanks for yours. Varsity track has a meet at Middlebury on the fourteenth, the meet starts at three thirty. Middle school track has an invitational meet on the sixteenth, the meet is at home, starts at ten. Uh, May twenty-second is a senior expo day, so that'll be a very scary day for the seniors. The fifth grade graduation is on June fourth at four thirty, eighth grade graduation is on the eleventh, and twelfth grade graduation is on June thirteenth.
Wow.
It's starting to get there.
Mm-hmm, coming up.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's going on?
Yes, thank you.
Busy month. Yes.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, you're pretty glad again.
Hey.
Yeah, really.
The end.
All right.
Oh, my gosh. Busy and very hot.
So, into readings of policy fifty-one forty-six, which is child nutrition and wellness. Uh, as we have been doing, two models, uh, this one has an intro and then the two models at the, at the bottom of it, so um, maybe entertain thoughts on that one.
As you can tell, when you hire a new wellness coordinator, you get a lot more attention.
I like that.
Okay, so, J C Puttless did a great job of, um, on those couple of pages, I think, giving you a lot of backup.
Wonderful. Mm-hmm.
Um, whether or not it's all digestible tonight and maybe a question for the board to consider. Um, I think that she and I have a good sense of how to, uh, how to fold all of this together, um, for the board to not only meet compliance, but also to, uh, capture the, the spirit, um, that we always follow at the beginning of our policies.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and upgrade with a real focus on wellness that we have, uh, set a course for. But there's a lot of stuff in there.
It is.
So, yeah, one of the challenges I had is taking the top piece of the suggested changes and mentally morphing them into the bottom one to find out what the policy would look like, um, when it was all in one piece. Um, I just, I had a hard time piecing it all together. So, what I was gonna recommend is that we bring this one back as one edited version so that it reads top to bottom rather than trying to piecemeal where things belong. I think, like I said, like you said, I think we got the spirit of it. But I can't, I can't get down through to read exactly what we would, how, how it would fit altogether, so.
Sort of the bold pieces down.
So, J C and I could synthesize this and bring back, um, a draft
Okay.
that blends what we believe the, the best of the, the current, the model and all of these suggested changing, changes.
Yep, I wouldn't bring back two, just, just one, morph one synthesized piece to
Just one, right.
Send appreciation for the deep, attention to detail.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it covers great stuff for kids.
Certainly the spirit of our wellness is, is, in the ends is tied into this too, so I'd, I'd like to make sure that we have a good squa- solid reading of it from from the top down.
So, we'll do that and we'll call it a first reading again next month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. But I think you've captured it pretty well. All right.
Yeah.
Then sixty-one fifty-one is course offerings and class size. So, initial thoughts here.
Is this there's no changes to this, right?
Nope, this one's being brought as
Just to
Pretty much as, yeah.
Normal review cycle, normal
And there's nothing we need to change in class size?
No.
So, but I, I did notice that with the VS, uh, VA's model policy, they don't get into the s- specific class size.
Yeah.
Right, but we have to have that.
Part, okay.
That was, that was one of the conditions that we had to have that by eleven, two thousand and eleven. I think was the, the timing.
You mean the chart?
The, yeah, yeah.
Is that what you're saying? The chart, whether or not it's included in the policy?
Right.
Yeah, it needs to be.
Okay.
The biggest question I had with this whole policy and the presentation we started our meeting with is, again, the same as we had the last time. Are we gonna be able to stay in
That's what I was wondering.
Side to policy, and I, I mean, we got till two thousand and sixteen, but we're on a three-year cycle, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, there's really no changes for next year, I don't think. As we get into sixteen, I wanna make sure that we're not operating outside of our policy.
Right.
But doing the right thing.
Yeah.
And so
You mean in terms of the changes that are gonna be happening, will this
Right.
And, do these ranges, optimal range, was that set by the school or is that set by just best practice? Where did these numbers come from, like fifteen to twenty-three for none, for PE or?
Those come from the s- come from the state.
From, okay, all right.
Yeah. There's a little bit of flexibility locally, but not much.
Okay.
Right, 'cause they did give, you know, depending on size, geography, the whole nine yards and
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I remember going through this before.
Right.
But I think it does bring up a good point because some of the language in the chart isn't gonna fit in a, in a, uh, with a house model very well because it talks about per course.
Right, and I remember, you know, a couple of years ago before policy governance, us dropping a course because there wasn't enough students.
There were only six kids, but it was an AP type class, if I remember right.
It was an AP, right, and so
Which you don't wanna do if you can help it, right?
Yeah. And I don't know for sure, but particularly at the high school, I would suspect it's on the list, probably lower down the list for the agency to start looking at with the SBA to say if we're saying in legislation that all schools need to be in a proficiency-based model by twenty twenty, we need to start working on policies or model policies to suggest. There's a lot of work out there with the New England, uh, Secondary School Consortium with model policies already built that I think that they'll look at.
Might we take our group that was here tonight and maybe have them take an hour or two to try to a- as we get closer through next year and maybe take a couple of pokes at it and see how does this fit and how does it align?
Mm-hmm.
Rather than waiting for somebody else to
Poke it and align it?
To try to piece something together that we then have to fit into. Just to make, 'cause I don't, again, the, the biggest thing is I don't wanna run outside of policy by doing the right, and doing the right thing at the same time, so just to
Right.
Right.
And even if it's getting rid of the
And because they're changing the way it's gonna be done anyways, it's a good thing they can look at and, you know, they can wiggle it if they need to.
Chart. Right.
Right.
For now, I didn't see anything really in here that would permit a, prevent us from moving forward with it, I was pretty good with it as is.
No, and I, and I think we could define what is course and content area me- to, in the meantime before there's some generally accepted practices around defining class size in a proficiency-based environment.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
To make ourselves comfortable that we're within our policy.
Right. Okay, so I would accept a motion to accept this, understanding that as we move forward into proficiency base, we may find some changes with it, but I would, at this point, accept a motion to uh, approve the current version of the course offerings and class size policy.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second. Hey, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, you wanna, you wanna do the legislative update? That's been a bouncing ball in pretty good shape, so.
Sure. It has been. So, the, uh, the latest, uh, in communication that I got today is that H three sixty-one, the, the, the really last substantive education bill that's, that's, uh, um, um, being considered
Mm-hmm.
is in conference with the members of the Senate and the House, and they're really focused on three areas. And that is, what are the actual methods for transforming governance? The small schools grant, what to do with that? It's been all over the map in terms of, we're gonna get rid of it, we're gonna sunset it, we're gonna keep it. Uh, and then finally, cost containment. So, we've heard everything from two percent caps to two point nine five, to no caps. Um, so really, this is the week where they're, uh, they have the, the, the last few days to figure this out. I have heard confidence from a couple of different places that there will be a bill. But what we, what it actually looks like in those major areas is yet to be seen.
But the House and the Senate are both collaborating on this.
They are.
Down to the last, down to the wire.
And it's good news.
Yep, it is, it is. Yep, and there's, there's modeling going on from appropriations to help, so there's, does seem to be, um, some really broad um, support to get something done.
Okay.
We've been so diligent over the years, I'm hoping we end up with something that has to do with a base around an average spending limit piece to get, you know, some kind of a, an acknowledgement that if you're underspending on average per equalized student, that you got a little bit of wiggle room, that you don't have to stay
Right.
that, that low. So, we'll see. Hopefully we'll have solid word, I'm sure, before we meet again and we'll get the communication. Great, all right, uh, recent community activities, anything come to the top? For anybody we had on?
Remember yesterday?
My husband and the ball, my husband was a great a great thing going on at O'Brien Center, um
Mm-hmm.
The girls did a beautiful job leading it, um, some good problem solving around that, that's good.
Hmm. Yep. Taking another step with Julian, he's not here tonight to, to help us, but with the opiate discussion in town here, that's been a I think that the direction has been incredible to see that it's not just, uh, uh, go out and get the addict, it's how do you as a community handle the whole issue, rather than, you know, the symptoms of the problem, so.
Do they have like, um, minutes and stuff from those meetings that they can share?
He's got, yeah, he's got some, some pictures of some diagrams that we put and I think there's a, a general outline of where we
Cause it'd be awesome to be able to try to get that out to community members that can't come and are interested in reading it.
Have talked about going. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I think it's
Put a little booklet together.
Yeah, and I think it's getting toward the point of action where it's, it's doing something, so it's time to get it out.
Yeah. Yep.
So, get a little bit more detail out. You mentioned something recent?
I said I couldn't remember yesterday, I'm trying to think if I've done anything since then.
Oh. Okay, sorry.
Last one here.
All right.
I went to the honors thing, honor society thing Monday.
Yes. Always good to recognize the honor society kids. All right, very good, so with that then, uh, things coming, spring into the arts that was mentioned, pops concert was mentioned, JFK concert was mentioned, the VSA and spring conference on May twenty-one and two. Uh, we've got the joint board retreat, May thirtieth, but it sounds like that is subject to change without notice.
I think we got it now.
And eight seventeen, the doodle came in our emails.
Yeah.
Eight seventeen, okay, good.
Oh, we did.
So, if you could, if you could please take the time to fill out as many as you can and try to be as flexible, we can try to get this, uh, I think it's a good good discussion to have, um you know, in lieu of sharing the knowledge with an Ellie May piece too. All right, anything else? All right, with that, I would accept a motion to move into executive session for labor relations and negotiations topic.
So.
Okay, second? Second? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will take three minutes and then into executive session.
Oh, this says only be three minutes.